But my official cellphone says it is 5:30. So, good evening and welcome to tonight's forum with the Hastings City Council. And I am Belba Jumper from the League of Women Voters and I will be your moderator this evening. I want to say thank you to our co-sponsors, which are the Hastings Area -- oh, can you hear me without the mic?
No, you need to use the mic. I can hear you. But the camera can't hear.
Okay. Would you like me to start over?
No.
I can hear you by my microphone.
It's gotta turn blue and it's not turning blue. Let me go get the other. Okay, well, I'm gonna say thank you to our co-sponsors, which are the Hastings Area Chamber of Commerce, Hastings Public Access Channel, the Adams County YWCA. And the Hastings Public Access Channel is videotaping the forum, so please encourage your friends who couldn't come tonight to watch that it will be broadcast on Channel 181 for Spectrum customers and Channel 16 for LO customers in the League of Women Voters of Hastings time slot. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization and it does not support or oppose candidates. The League has been educating voters for over 100 years because it believes that democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of citizens. So, tonight's forum, and by the way, I didn't think we had to start with one all the time, so we did have Tony draw from a deck, but it turned out one starts anyway. So, from Ward 1, we have Ginny Scutnick and Stephen Wayne Huntley. From Ward 2, Trent Meyer. Brad Konsberg had a scheduling conflict, so wasn't able to be with us tonight. Ward 3, Chuck Rosenberg and Mark Rowan. And Ward 4, Matt Fong and Roger Harper. How is this?
Same.
Oh. Is this good?
It looks nice.
So. Okay. Oh, it works wonderful. Okay, and I want to say welcome also to Tony Herman from the Hastings Tribune for our media panelist tonight. Now, a little bit about how we're going to function. Each candidate is allowed one minute opening statement, and after the opening statements in rotating order, the media will ask questions. We were first going to give Tony two questions, but since he's the only media there, Tony, if you have another pressing question, we'll allow that. And again, each of the candidates in rotating order will respond to Tony's questions with one minute. If a candidate mentions something that one of the other candidates feel is incorrect or misleading, they will be allowed to respond for 30 seconds. So, when that happens, you'll need to raise your hand to let me know that you would like the 30-second rebuttal. And, audience, first of all, I thank you for investing in this time to come this evening. We also encourage questions from the audience. We have paper and pencils that will be distributed by our helpers, Deb Sherrick and Linda Ray. When you have a question that you would like to write down, raise your hand and they will come to you with a pencil and paper. We ask that you please keep your questions pertinent to the issues that might be addressed on the Hastings City Council. Also, no personal attacks, and we will have the questions compiled by our league members at this table, Judy Reimer and Pat Hughes. And our timers this evening, at the timer tables, are Phil Selyers and Judy Sandine. And of course, green means that you may start talking. Yellow means that you have 30 seconds left and the red is the stop. You may finish the sentence here in the midst of them. And finally, you may be met at the greeters this evening, Judy Hall and also Pat Hughes. So, now, we are ready to begin, and since Tony drew the ace card, we'll begin with Ginny Scutnick for one minute. And Ginny, do you have the mic down there? Okay, good.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to come and speak.
It's not on. I don't think.
That's it? It's on, testing?
Maybe just not close enough.
Yeah, maybe. My name's Ginny Scutnick and I've been a resident of Hastings for 30 years. 22 of that years, I've been involved in the city. I worked for the city for 13 years and I've served it as a Ward 1 councilperson for nine years. I'm originally from Omaha. The city of Hastings has always held a special place in my heart. It's been a wonderful place to raise a family and we've got good quality of life here, and I'm anxious to run again and continue representing my constituents.
Thank you. The next Ward 1 candidate, Stephen Wayne Huntley.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. One of the reasons I decided to run, I was approached by some members of the 1st Ward and said, "Steve, there seems to be a disconnect anymore with the city council. They've lost focus on what is going on in our community. They've forgotten that the citizens are the boss. The city administrator, the mayor, all work for the council, and the council works for the citizens." This was made apparent by the email blasts that we have seen recently on Facebook. Another reason, the dreaded pink cards that have recently come out. We need to get the city taxes and budget under control. It's time the city starts working with the state to provide comprehensive tax overhaul sit hall.
As we move on to Ward 2, we'll have the one-minute opening statement by Trent Meyer.
My name is Trent Meyer. I was born and raised here in Hastings. I've been here all of my life. I own and operate Trent Meyer Construction. I have decided that I'd like to run for city council because I see that there are some changes that maybe need to be made in the council and with the city administrator and the mayor, and I would just like to have the opportunity to maybe have some transparency for my constituents and keep Hastings moving forward in the right direction.
Good times. Thank you. Candidate Meyer. Moving on to Ward 3, our first candidate, Chuck Rosenberg.
Again, thank you for having me. I am a lifelong resident of Hastings, was born here, went to Hastings High School and later the University of Nebraska at Lincoln. I'm married to my wife, Paris. We have 12 children between us and 26 grandchildren and one cat at this time. I am an Eagle Scout, been involved in scouting since I was a young person, served as a Cub Master, I've been involved with Hastings J.C.'s. I went through the Leadership Hastings Program, served on their Board of Directors. Currently, I'm the president of the Hastings Community Theater. I were also, before I got onto city council, I was on planning and zoning for 13 years and served as a year and a half as their chairman, which was, I think, a good background for getting on city council. I have, feel like I have the leadership abilities and the qualifications, being in business for 47 years, to continue on with the city and do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. The second candidate in Ward 3, Mark Rowan, one minute.
Hello, my name is Mark Rowan. My wife's name is Mindy. Mindy's the piano player at Hastings High School for the choir for the last 14 or so years. We're very pro-Hastings High School. My wife and I have three kids, Shelby, who's a lawyer here in town, married to the choir director at Hastings High, a son named Colby and his wife, she's in law school at Wash U right now, down on St. Louis, and our little daughter, Carly. If you ever know, I put lots and lots and lots and lots of pictures of Carly on Facebook. She's very, very proud of her. I've lived in town for about 38 years. Like my friend here, I'm an Eagle Scout, leadership Hastings, Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors a while back. I worked at Geiger &amp; Dietz Ophthalmology, have now for about eight years or so. Before that, I worked for that guy named Alton Jackson. Maybe you've heard of his name, I'm sure. I appreciate your vote and a chance to be able to help to right some wrongs that have happened in our city government. Thank you.
Moving on to Ward 4, our first candidate, Matt Fong.
Hi, everybody. My name's Matt Fong. I have lived in Hastings for approximately 21 years now. I graduated from Hastings College and didn't go far, so just live right around Hartwell Park. My wife and I, we have one child, Vivian, she's 11, so she just started 5th grade at Longfellow Elementary, which is just down the street from our house. So, we certainly have really appreciated the opportunity to become involved and engaged in our community. And so, we have, we feel very fortunate to be involved in a lot of different community groups and participate in a lot of different civic organizations. I am a part of the Morning Rotary Group. I've served on the Hastings Chamber Board. I've served the Hastings Economic Development Corporation and really have enjoyed the opportunity, also served on the library board too, by the way, the opportunity to be involved in our community. I'll tell you, I appreciate the time that we have been given here to introduce ourselves.
Thank you. And final Ward 4 candidate, Roger Harper.
Hello, I'm Roger Harper. I've lived in Hastings off and on for most of my life, which has been rather lengthy. I have a wife and four children and 12 grandchildren. My first professional job was a counselor at Hastings Regional Center in the rehab department. I went on to get a master's degree, and after that, I've been involved primarily in management of human services programs, both for the state, for the counties, and for private nonprofit and profit organizations. I have a lot of experience in management, and I'd like to bring that to the city council, and your vote would be appreciated.
If you want to pass that, that's fine. Okay, thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. Now, we will do a rotating system, so you don't have to be the first one to answer each question. And we'll move on to questions from the media. Welcome, Tony Herman from the Hastings Tribune. Tony, your first question?
Thanks, Belba. When making a controversial or difficult decision, how do you weigh your own opinion versus the opinions of your constituents versus recommendations from city staff or any consultants that the city may hire for a specific issue?
And we'll begin Award 1, Wayne Huntley. Stephen Wayne Huntley.
How do we for the green card? Thank you, Tony. That's a good question. When weighing the factors involved, the number-one choice should be the constituents, what they want. You are their representative. It is important that you listen, you have an open dialogue with your constituents. You treat them like you would treat your aunts, your uncle, your family. They're the ones who put you into power, they're the ones who you represent. You then have to weigh the consultants, the professionals, and see what they say. See how their beliefs are different, and maybe there's a common ground. Sometimes you'll find it, sometimes you won't, but you always have to have the people in mind when voting.
Thank you.
That's pretty good today.
And we'll move on to Ward 2 with Trent Meyer answering that same question. If you want the question repeated, Tony would be willing to do that, I'm sure.
I would appreciate that, yes.
When making a difficult or controversial decision, how would you weigh your own opinion versus the opinion of your constituents versus the feedback or recommendations you've received from city staff or any consultants that the city would have hired for an issue?
Well, I believe you need to, like Steve said, you need to weigh all of your constituents' opinions because they are the ones that put you there. You're representing them in the decisions that the city is making, and I believe that even if you've got a consultant that's hired to make any of these decisions and your constituents are against or for something that they're not, you still need to, you still need to vote however your constituents want you to vote. So, you may need to vote against, you know, a study or something like such. It really comes down to the people and how they want you to vote, and you're gonna have to get out there and you're gonna have to actually listen to them, you know, whether it be Facebook or whatever. Sorry.
Oh, moving on to Ward 3, Chuck Rosenberg. Are you ready with your response?
Yeah, thank you very much, because as most of you know, we've had some pretty controversial decisions to make on city council, so if you'd even take a look at the Race Track Casino, we had to listen to the constituents. Personally, I was okay with it, but the constituents said, "No, not in my backyard." They didn't feel it was a good place. Also, I had to listen to recommendations from our other people, such as our Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think that's important, that their opinions be weighed in. Also, you listen to the experts and the professionals when you make a decision because that's important. And the last thing you have to use is common sense. So, if you've lived in this community a long time and you've been in business here, you know how the community feels, so that's very important when you make a tough decision. Thank you.
And Mark Rowan, Ward 3.
It seems like the citizens of Hastings oftentimes, when they're speaking with me, feel like they don't have much of a voice, that they don't have much of a say, like, "Hey, I'd like to weigh in on such and such topic." And it seems as if, as I go to city council meetings, that sometimes we hear all these big studies and these, and this input from these consulting companies we bring in from the outside, and it seems like those two need to kind of figure each other out a little bit so that the citizens actually know what the consultants are saying and that the consultants actually consider what the people might think or feel. I was at a meeting a while back, city council, and afterwards, a city councilman or two said, "Wow, we could have predicted that consultant ahead of time. Yes, exactly what we already knew without even hiring them." I thought that was interesting. So, anyway, I think we need to let the citizens know what the consultants say, and the citizens need to be able to convey their thoughts to us.
Thank you. Ward 4, Matt Fong, to begin.
Yeah, we certainly have had a few difficult or controversial decisions over the course of the last four years. No doubt, there were lots of things that I never expected that we would have had to discuss, but I really do think, you know, certainly what I've learned over the course of the last four years, it really is important to be able to share what is being provided either from consultants or staff with the constituents in the community. Sometimes I do feel like there is a miscommunication or a misalignment in providing that information, and I know we need to do a better job in getting that information out to the constituents so that they have all of the information to best make the decision for the future as well. I certainly have tried to reach out and connect with maybe not necessarily only people who have strong feelings regarding an issue, but reaching out to others that may have a peripheral view of that issue or decision as well.
Thank you. And Ward 4, Roger Harper.
Sure, I get to be the last one.
Well, no, Ginny gets to be the last one.
It's been my experience that the city has not got an adequate method of getting information from the citizens. We don't have a central hotline, we don't have, we do have telephone opportunities, but it's been my experience that I don't get a response when I call council people, and the council itself is set up where if I come with a complaint or an idea, I have to put that in writing 10 days ahead of the scheduled meeting, and then I get two minutes. Two minutes. That's twice as much time as right now to make my case, that's wrong. That's wrong.
Thank you for passing the mic. And the final response to that question, Ginny.
Well, there are a lot of issues that have come up in the last nine years anyway that are tough. It varies from problem to problem. If it's a health and safety issue, we have to go with that first. That's our top priority, is to keep all our citizens safe. After that, none of us on the council are professional, you know, builders or, we're laymen, so we have to depend on our professionals for their opinion on the right way to do things. Constitents certainly weigh in there, but I've got constituents that feel in opposite ways, so I don't weigh in on, I go with the majority. As far as, I think part of the question was our own personal opinion, that gets put on the back burner. That's part of serving, is you don't, you don't use your own opinion.
Thank you. Now, I told you, if anyone has a rebuttal to any of those, you do have 30 seconds. I've seen no hands, am I correct?
No.
Okay. Chuck Rosenberg, and this is 30 seconds.
Right, we need to tell them there's no 30-second warning on this.
That's all right. It's not gonna take that long. I just, I just wanted to say, I know communication is vital. Myself and Joy Huffaker in the 3rd Ward, we hosted a town hall meeting here at the library, I believe, last April. We had probably 80 people here, and we answered any and all questions that the citizens had, and we will continue to do so in the future.
Thank you, candidate Rosenberg. Anyone else, everybody? How are we doing with the audio and the mics? Is it okay? Okay. Now, we're ready for question number two from Tony Herman of the Tribune.
What topic that the city has not addressed to this date, would you like to address, either if you're elected for your first term, first term, or a subsequent term if you're an incumbent here today?
And for that question, we start with Ward 2, and the first person to speak will be Trent Meyer.
Could I get you to repeat that?
Sure. What topic would you, or issue would you like to, would you like to address that the city has not addressed so far, if you're elected?
I believe the infrastructure of the city, I think it's on what they call a five-year plan, and I believe it needs to be moved up. I don't know really what's going on there, but I'm afraid that we're falling behind in our maintenance, and I think it needs to get caught up.
Thank you. Moving on to Ward 3, Chuck Rosenberg, would you like the question?
No, I'll be, I'll be happy to answer that.
Okay, one minute.
Okay. Number-one issue we have in Hastings, as well as the entire state of Nebraska, is housing. We do not have enough housing for our residents that's affordable housing. Do you know we have over 5,000 people commute into the city of Hastings every day because there's not adequate housing for them to live here? So, the question boils down, how can you grow Hastings if you don't have adequate housing? So, we had a study done, we haven't followed up with it, but we really need to get very serious about that, and I'll push for that the next time I'm up. And then, lastly, I would say transportation. We did a parking and transportation study. We need to take a look at our city parking lots. We need to take a look at the one-way streets, that may be on our agenda here, but there's no guarantee we're gonna change that, but we need to take a look at all of those things. And I don't know if you mentioned the state, but we need to really get on the state about getting some of these projects done that they promised us that they haven't done.
Thank you. Mark Rowan.
I come at things from a little different perspective. I'd like to see someone look into these nasty emails that have been done on the government server, find out who all just refer to as the bad eggs, find out who the bad eggs are, and say, "Hey, you're not really representing the citizens. You don't really care about the citizens. You're bad-mouthing the citizens by name." I've seen a few of the emails and I think, "Holy mackerel, that person is still being employed by the city, still called, so-called serving the community. Shouldn't that person at least have their hand slapped?" It seems like that's not happening, and it seems like it'd be hard to have a representative government without that taking place first.
Hold on a second. Okay. Okay, Matt Fong, Ward 4.
No problem. You know, one of the topics that I think is just fundamental for us to be able to move forward with a lot of our items that need to, needs to be addressed is communication. And so, clearly, we need to do a better job of getting information out to our constituents and citizens at large and having one place where folks can go to find the factual information that we're looking for. We're not able to solve some of our housing issues without communication. We're not able to solve some of our economic-related challenges without adequate communication and work more broadly together with all of the different partners in our community without communication. And, you know, you think about quality of life. I think we want and deserve and need to have a citizen base that is well-informed and knows what's going on and how to best work together for providing additional opportunities for members of our community. So, I think a lot of our issues can be helped and solved with some additional communication.
Thank you. Roger Harper.
My main reason that I'm running for city council is because of a couple of issues. One is the city hall, the proposal to sell it and move to Hastings Utilities and spend probably $10 million in that effort. The other one is the bridge on 16th Street, the overpass. Both of these facilities were described as suffering from deferred maintenance, and deferred maintenance is described as being, "We don't have enough money, we don't have the skills to repair, or we don't care." I need to know why the city hall, which the mayor, the administrator, and the council go to for meetings and make decisions, wasn't noticed that it was deteriorating by these administrators of Hastings.
And we'll move back to Ward 1 then to finish the replies to that question, and we'll begin with Ginny Scutnick.
Just to clarify, we're saying issues that have not been brought up already, right? Okay. It has to do with housing, but it's the vacant, it's the vacant homes that are owned by out-of-state landlords that let them deteriorate. On the south side, we've got many, many residences that are, you know, just in shambles, and that's one thing the city, finally, is putting money aside to start to address abatement of those nuisance homes. So, that's the one issue I think needs to be done.
Thank you. And finally, Ginny.
Can I have the question repeated, Tony, please?
Sure. What topic or issue that the city has not addressed so far, would you want to address if you're elected to the council?
The one issue I think that the city really needs to start addressing, especially with the state, comes down to our favorite little pink card again. Until we start getting comprehensive property tax relief and tax reform, we will not be
going to have shell shock. A lot of their, their property taxes are put in with their mortgage bill. They won't realize what happened. The cities can work with the state at a ground roots level to start coming up with ideas and how to fix the property tax and the whole tax situation.
Thank you. That concludes the replies to that question. Tony, do you have another question?
No, you can open it up to the public.
We'll go to the audience, okay. Okay. And for this one, we'll begin with Chuck Rosenberg in Ward 3. How do you feel about the property valuation increase and the related higher property taxes?
Now, let's see, I got seven notices that went up 20-some percent. That's outrageous with inflation right now. Hopefully, and I know I had people ask me about this, and I said, well, we need to reduce the mill levy if the valuations are going up, because you can only ask so many dollars from the tax-paying citizens. And right now, hopefully, when our statements come out in December, it won't even be close to what these cards are saying. I know there's an article in the Tribune today that indicated that there were some things that weren't exactly going to be that much of a property increase, but I don't think we can ask the citizens to pay that right now with high inflation and everything. It's going to kill growth in our community as well.
Thank you. Mark Rowan.
Could you ask that question again, please?
Yes. How do you feel about the property valuation increase and the related higher property taxes?
Well, this will be a real short answer. I liked everything he just said. Sincerely. I appreciate Chuck, and I, the things that he just said, I thought they were straightforward, realistic. People need to have a say, people don't need, just keep getting squeezed all the time. All in there.
Thank you. Ward 4, and Matt Fong.
Yeah, so, I mean, similar to, to the answers that were just shared. Property valuations, I, I think it's probably this group all knows, property valuations are not set by the city, so that's set by the county. But I do think that we, as a city council currently, feel strongly about lowering our property tax levy to, to try to offset some of that increase in valuations that we know will certainly affect city individuals and homeowners and business owners. So I, I think it's important for, for us to recognize that and do what we can to control costs.
Thank you. Roger Harper, Ward 4.
From a management point of view, I would think that the city council should really go over the city's directors' budgets individually, and I don't know that that's being done. There's, if you, if you, as a department head, if I send in my budget from a department and I'm asking for four or five new staff members, I would think that, that the city council and the administration would look at that carefully, and that would be something that I would be really interested in as a new council member.
Thank you. Back to Ward 1 with Jenny Skudnik.
I'm in agreement, our tag, we do need to get a handle on our taxes. Part of, you know, the budget process with the city starts in April, and we do go through every department's request, they pare it down, by the time the council gets it, in August. It's been, it's been pared down already, and we do review it and cut or suggest, you know, it depends on what the priorities from the constituents are. If people want to start making improvements on the airport, well, we have to take that into consideration. But, but like Matt had said, the city's portion of the tax, your property taxes, is a very small amount. There's a lot of other agencies in there that add, add to it. Take a look at the breakdown, it'll be published, I think, next week in the paper, and look at, compare the city's amount to the other entities.
Thank you. Stephen Wayne Huntley.
Will I repeat the question, please?
How do you feel about the property valuation increase and the related higher property taxes?
I don't like it. If anyone in this room likes it, we need to talk, the innings of hell. The property taxes are killing homebuyers, they're killing people, they're killing investment in our community. We have to get them under control, not just the city, the schools, the county, all the other districts and organizations that are on your tax bill. The high amount that the valuations increased this time were outrageous. Accompanied by high interest rates, accompanied by increase in the mill levies, that went up, although the valuation went up, yes, they said, the city said they took a 3% reduction, but when the valuations go up 11%, I'll let you do the math, there was still an increase.
Thank you. And finally, on that question, Trent Meyer.
Completely unfair. Everybody already answered this question. I, I believe it's time to really dig deep, and we need to cut, we need to get some budget cuts, we need to find out where, where this money is going. It seems to be like a bleeding artery. I don't know if we've, you know, if we've got wasteful spending, if we have, just, you know, where it's, where it's going, but we've got to get to the bottom of it immediately and, and solve the, solve this problem everywhere.
Thank you. As you're answering that question, I noticed some head nodding, that is there anyone who would like a 30-second rebuttal or addendum to anything? Chuck Rosenberg.
I just wanted to say, Roger, sorry, Roger, but, Mr. Harper, the, the staff increases that we have been asked to have are in fire and police, and I don't think there's anybody in the room that would deny that we have a safe and clean city, so when those come forward to the council, we have to really look at those, and I don't think it would be hard for anyone in the community to want to deny that increase for staff.
Another rebuttal, okay, another addendum, Roger Harper, 30 seconds.
The fire and the, and the police are essential services. The other day, Mr. Huntley and I were visiting by the Tribune building, and there was some sort of an emergency going on in, on Burlington Avenue, and we noticed there were, it was a fire truck, there was an ambulance, there were two police cars, and an additional ambulance going by, and it kind of struck me as it might have been some overkill.
Okay. Oh, Jenny Skudnik, would you like to do a 30 second also?
I just want to mention that, Mr. Harper, if that was my mother, I wouldn't care how many ambulances went, or how many firefighters went, I'd want them to be safe.
Thank you. Any other 30-second comments? Okay, the next question from the audience. And we start this time, we're in Ward 3, with Mark Rowan. What are your ideas for making a budget that meets the ends without raising taxes? What could be cut?
Well, I, I don't get to go through the budget line by line and understand all the intricacies of it. I do go to all the city council meetings trying to grasp what's all going on. My, because I only know so much, I'll just tell you, I would think someone needs to go through, someone like me, if I get in, to go through line by line, say, now what's this? Now, why is this increase? And really be a stickler about, well, I don't really think we need to do that. Do we really need a, do we really need to have that city fire marshal? Do we really need to have different topics like that?
That's a question.
Sorry, sorry. I kind of did something wrong there. Anyway, I, somebody's got to go line by line and do the tough work.
Thank you. Matt Austin.
Yeah, would you repeat the question?
Sure. What are your ideas for making a budget that meets the ends without raising taxes? What could be cut?
Yeah, that's a great question, crystal ball. We certainly have spent an extraordinary amount of time each year reviewing the budget. We do deep dives with department heads in all of their department requests, and what all of the line items go for in each of the department requests, and so we really do a deep dive into those budgets. And so we really do, at least I feel, as though we are well-prepared to, to make and approve those budgets going forward. Certainly, nobody likes to raise city budgets, and I think we have done a pretty decent job. I think it's six, seven, eight years, maybe eight years since the levy was, was changed, so keeping our levy rate consistent and not raising our tax levy on individuals, I think, has, has served us well. We do need to continue to either find additional revenues to bring in, or areas that we can cut, but, but as, as mentioned before, I don't know what city services our citizens are open to us not providing.
Thank you. Roger Harper.
Having never looked at the city budget in depth, I kind of thought here, it's not a very good answer, but I, I do know that the city of Hastings is advertising for an assistant city manager, and we haven't hired a city manager yet. I think that that needs to be looked at pretty carefully. I, I think that, I've also heard that, that we're looking at an assistant city attorney. I haven't seen that listed, but it's what I've been told. These extra help, you know, cost money, those are not low-paying jobs, so I'd look at, I'd look at those kinds of things, and go line by line, as, has already been mentioned.
Thank you.
Down the line here.
Back to Ward 1 and Jenny Skudnik.
Could you repeat that again?
Ah, I will. What are your ideas for making a budget that meets the ends without raising taxes? What could be cut?
Well, we could shut the lights off in this building, we could shut the lights off in the museum, we could not have pool hours like we do, we could quit providing services if that's what the constituents want, but, but in order to provide the good quality of life that we enjoy here in Hastings, it does take dollars. We could shut down the airport, sell it, we could, you know, make our fire department a volunteer fire department, and not have to pay them, but I, I think most constituents want the, the services that we do offer here. Every year, like Matt, like others have said, we go line, we go through the budget line by line. You know, the city faces the same types of things that we, that constituents do, inflation, all of our supplies for, to run the city cost more too, so we have, I mean, we have to keep up with that. We don't want to send our firefighters out with less than good material to fight a fire with.
Thank you. Stephen Wayne Huntley.
Some years ago, I was on the council, and when we received the budget, it was a month-long process. We went tab by tab, department by department. We made each department head justify everything they wanted, and then we would move things around. Could you get away with not having it this year? Can we move it to this year? Is it a luxury? This is something that needs to be done. Now the budget the city goes through has done a one or two meetings. There's a lot of things in the budget, especially now since the utilities have joined. We need to figure out a better taxing method within the state. Once that is done, you will be able to afford everything the city needs and a better luxuries.
Thank you. Trent Meyer, Ward 2.
I believe that we can get different methods of going through that budget and breaking it down to make, make it work for everybody, get the things that people need, possibly not this year, maybe for the next year's budget, but not right now. We need to, to save some money on the taxes. We've got to, I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure, I just, it's, I don't know, I lost it again. Sorry.
Finally.
That's okay. Are you ready now?
Yeah.
Ready? Okay, finally, Chuck Rosenberg.
I just need to answer two questions here that Roger, the assistant city attorney will replace our attorney, who is going to be retiring at the end of the year, and I believe now council doesn't feel an assistant is needed for our city administrator when we hire a new one. There's a feeling that our current, our former assistant administrator maybe was taking on too much, so I think that those two positions won't be happening. I would just like to say it's tough to cut back, you know what we just said about maintenance. You cut back on maintenance, it's a bad thing to do, so look at city hall and then that, the viaduct itself. So you can't defer maintenance, so you have to make sure that you're doing that. In business, you'll do that too, or you'll be out of business. We try to save money, and I push for getting better bids on equipment that we need, and I think we do have a procurement person to do that now. We can consolidate some of the departments. I think a city mechanic that handled all of the city functions would save some money, so there are some ways to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like a 30-second response to any comment that was made? Not seeing any? Okay. The next question will begin with Matt Fong. Do we have one another from the audience? Okay. What is your opinion on more discussion at city council meetings, not just at the work sessions?
Yeah, good question. I've, I've had that question a lot. I feel like there are a lot of individuals in the community that, that hear or see or come to council meetings and say, oh my gosh, you just voted 7 or 8-0 with, with hardly any discussion. We do receive all of our materials in advance for council meetings, and so we have lots of opportunities to weigh in and review that detailed information prior to council meetings. And in addition, I've also heard some feedback that, that sometimes it appears as though we just blanket approve everything. My feedback or counter to that would be, what items would you like for us to not approve in, in some of our discussions going forward? So, you know, if we're changing ordinances or allowing other opportunities for, for businesses to grow and expand from TIF financing and those type of things, I just, I, I struggle, and I understand that there are concerns about that, but I, I think it's important for us to support the things that need to be supported.
Thank you. Roger Harper.
This ties back into the business of how do citizens get input to the city council and the administration of the city. Currently, as it is established, it does appear, as Matt said, that, that everything's gotten right, that everybody votes the same, and it has the appearance that there have been meetings to get everybody together, because unanimous voting, particularly irritating is the electronic thing as opposed to voice votes. I think that the whole, the whole issue of people taking the time off to come to the city council meeting, and then being treated like second-class citizens by this two-minute business and the 10-day notification business, is entirely the wrong direction that the and the 10-day notification business is entirely the wrong direction that the city of Hastings is going at this point in time. And I should be out of time.
Thank you, Roger Harper. Back to Ward one was Jenny Scudnik.
The first thing, all of us council members have contact information listed. I would, I, I would welcome comments. There's not one email or phone call that I have not returned or spoken to the person. That's part of it, I mean, that's, that's the constituents' responsibility. If they have an issue that they need to talk about, they need to contact their council member. Or, or if it's, if they know they need to contact the city, go ahead and contact the city. But I know there's many constituents that I have helped with issues over the years. But, but we don't know what we don't know. If, if there's an issue in your neighborhood, call your council member. You know, if you can't get a resolve, and you, you know, just contact us. And I think both, all, all of our council members are open to communication.
Could you repeat the question, please?
What is your opinion on more discussion at city council meetings, not just at the work sessions?
The discussion at the city council meetings is where it should be, not at the work session. People tune in and watch. Sometimes a simple question by a council member and requiring the staff to answer would take in, clean up the way everyone's going to vote, it would explain it. Council members do get a lot of information and they read it, they go through it, they have conversations with department heads, citizens, whatever. But no one knows about it. Sometimes a simple question, a simple comment, a simple explanation on why you're voting, what it is, would make the public feel a lot better. This is one thing I will press for if elected.
Trent Meyer?
All about the transparency. Every time that I've had any kind of issue with the city and I've gone to my council members, I have gotten kind of the runaround or yeah, that's the way that we're leaning and then they vote the other way. Or I've, I've never had any kind of honesty or I've never felt any, any integrity from the, my council members. And I, I want to feel that I could, I would be that person for my constituents instead of the other way. I don't want them to feel like they shouldn't be scared to come to me and talk to me about something.
And Chuck Rosenberg?
I guess I give the last comment on this. Yes, we do a lot of studies and, and study over our agendas very thoroughly before a meeting. So sometimes it eliminates some of the discussion. But when it comes to controversial topics, if you were at the Gracino, that was a four-hour discussion by the public. So we are open to public discussions. I would like to see at the meeting that the public could speak for up to three minutes on, on any item, not anything that's not related to a public hearing. I think that would help a bit as well. I don't know if many of you listen to what planning and zoning does. A lot of our stuff that we get comes from planning and zoning and it's thoroughly vetted and discussed there. So when we get it, we look at the recommendations, we read over those, and that's how we vote. So it may sound like we're always voting together, but it's on common sense items that you wouldn't vote no one to pay the city bills or things in that nature.
And finally, Mark Rowan on that question.
Ever since I threw my hat in the ring to run for city council, I've gone to every city, city council meeting. And I would disagree with my, with my compadre here about, it doesn't seem like I can catch on at very many meetings about what's actually going on and why in the world it is that every single time it's seven oh or eight oh. Really? I can't, one time, Mr. Butch Ely voted against something, one to seven. Or he was the one standing out and I thought, wow, that's great. And I went up to thank him afterwards because I was very pleased about that. So anyway, I do think there's a poor transparency, poor explanation, hard to understand what's actually going on. Now, why did they vote like that again? The other thing that, which is a little bit related is I also think it's real difficult for people who go to these meetings to have a say and to have a voice. Something about the way we are running, I think the way that Roger said, you have to sign, sign up several days in advance and you have such a short amount, amount of time. Once again, it's predisposed to not be transparent.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like a 30-second reply to any comments made to answer that question? Okay, looking at the clock, I think it's time that we move on to our closing statements. And Roger, that means you could go first. One minute.
Okay. I have, I have several things that, that bother me. Not the least of which is tearing down the, the overpass on 16th Street. That was a historical bridge made by, by people during times that were rougher than they are today. When men had to go to soup lines and things like that just to eat. I, I, the city hall issue is another thing and I think it's just awful. That, that needs to be fixed, not sold. I have a thing about two-way streets in Hastings. I don't think that's necessary and I think that needs to go to the vote of the people. That's it.
Sorry.
I would like to just remind everybody the good stewardship that the current council and past councils have provided this community. And it sometimes is a whole different story when you're in the seat. I think some of you have been in the seat before. There's state statutes that we have to abide by, there's, there's rules and regulations that the state hands down. It's not just do whatever you want when you get into the elected office. I would appreciate anybody's vote. And if there's issues out there that, that in your, in Ward one or even the whole community, we're in wards, but we, we take comments from anybody. I would encourage you to contact me.
Thank you. Stephen Wayne Humbley, final statement.
If elected, I will take and push for transparency, accountability. I want to be the citizen's vote, voice. I want to give the citizens back a voice. I want to take and make sure that questions are asked, that the discussion is held in front of the camera during the city council meeting. I know there's a lot of things that happen behind scenes at work sessions and stuff. I've been there. But like I said, get it out front. Simple questions, simple comments can alleviate a lot of problems if people understand where you're voting from, where you're coming from, and really what the issue is.
Thank you. Moving on to Ward two.
I think I could have kept going.
I'm sorry, did you want to go?
Oh, I think she broke her timer.
No, I didn't. No, you just finished before your time. I just moved on.
Okay, Trent Meyer, final, one minute.
I've run my business here in Hastings for 20 years. And I've looked at the way that the, that the city has kind of gone in a, a direction that, that's kind of unfavorable for the youth to stay here. We don't have the jobs for them, we don't have any of the, maybe a lack of the entertainment. We have wonderful schools, we have great systems like that. But we need to get the, the business and industries here to keep our kids here, to, to get the schools on board, to work with the businesses so that we can, we can keep our next generation here in Hastings and keep the city growing in a positive, forward direction.
Thank you. Chuck Rosenberg, final statement.
Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters. Accessible, that's me, I am accessible. I work at City Arna Mill, my office is always open. I spent an hour today talking to a gentleman about bike trails. You can come in and see me, I don't need an appointment, I have office staff that can take care of the business. I am the only councilman with their cell phone posted on the website. I go to almost every chamber and public event, so if you have a question, you can always ask me. I always will listen, I'm pro-growth, pro-business for this community. And if elected, I'll continue to carry that on, thank you.
Thank you. Mark Rowan?
Many people who speak to me have told me about how they're not very happy with how the city government has been as of late. The stories in the newspaper about the emails and that sort of thing where people's voices aren't being shared. I think it's time for a change. I would ask that those who are voters would vote in some new folks and let us mix some things up. There you go.
And finally, Matt Fong for a final statement.
Yeah, I really am, I'm so excited about the future of our community. I, I think we have lots of great things to look forward to in the future. I think, you know, as we begin to welcome our new city administrator, we'll have some new development services staff. We'll, we'll have some additional retirements coming with our city staff as well. And then we'll also have a new comprehensive plan that I think will guide us for, for the next 10 years, I hope. You look around and see the Theater District Development Project, you look at our beautiful downtown and, and lots of our other projects that we have kind of in the works. And I think that we really are in an opportunity now to really see some wonderful things happen in our community for the future. And I think we need to continue to remember and prioritize our future focus. And so what will our community look like for, for our kids and great kids for the future?
Okay. Thank you, that concludes our candidate forum for the Hastings City Council. I first of all want to thank all of you candidates for offering your time and your skills and your talents if elected. And I want to thank our sponsors. And I especially want to thank those of you in the audience for taking part of your valuable time this evening to become an educated voter. We do have some more forums coming up. Tomorrow at the YW, at noon, we have two. First of all, it will be the Adams County Register of Deeds. And then for, starting at 12:30, it will be the Nebraska State Board of Education, District Six, two candidates. Then, we also have two forums, they're both on Fridays, both at noon. The first, October 7th, is the Voter ID Constitutional Amendment, we'll be presenting both sides. And October 14th, a Friday, at noon at the YW, raising the minimum wage. Feel free to bring your bread bag and, and lunch with us if you would like. One more that I want to mention, not sponsored by our league, but I want to tell you about it, the Hastings County School Board, that will be October 3rd. And that will be at the Lincoln Elementary School. So again, thank you for coming. If any of you are interested in league membership, I'm sure we would love to talk to you. So that concludes our evening and remember to vote on November 8th. Thank you.